Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Macon-Bip County Pre-Commission Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June the 3rd, and the time is now 5:05. I'd like to officially welcome everyone here to our meeting. We'll begin our meeting with a call to order, followed by the approval of the amendments. The approval of the amendments tonight is from our May the 20th, 2025 Pre-Commission Meeting Minutes. Can I get a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Wynn, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Bronson. Bronson, I'm sorry, because Mr. Bronson is not here. Commissioner, the other Commissioner Bronson, Commissioner Stewart. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Let's move on to items three. It's agreements and contracts. We've got several of those on there tonight, at least three. This is a resolution of the Macon-Bip County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Tough Dog Loan Care LLC for landscape maintenance services at various recreational facilities in amount of $396,000 to be paid from the recreational department budget maintenance contract labor. Including your packet was the listing that we put out there and the people who responded. Out of all those that we sent it to, I think over 396 folks, we had eight that applied. And this particular company was the company who won the bid for the contract services for recreation. So at this time, we entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Wynn, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Wilder. Commissioner Wynn, do you have a question?
A question. Was, who did we have last year? Or is this, are they brand new to us, Tough Dog?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so...
They applied, they met all the guidelines that we had, and they were the least expensive bid.
Whoever we had last year didn't reapply?
I think they have reapplied, but was not the successful bidder.
Okay, thank you.
Which happens. We're trying to get more people involved in the process with our small business department and this particular company. But we've got plenty of landscaping to be done, so we've been very successful about getting local folks to do that job. So we do have a motion as second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Item B is the ordinance of Macon-Bip County Commission to authorize the appropriation of up to $96,595 from the sponsor programs, schools on camera funds, to be allocated to the Academy for Classical Education, Inc., for individual panic alarms, mapping software, and campus perimeter fencing. At this time, we entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Wilder, we have a second. Second by Mayor Potem Clark. Any questions? Here are no questions. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries and will be sent to consent agenda. Item C is a resolution of the Macon-Bip County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Chris R. Sheridan &amp; Company, doing business as Sheridan Construction, in amount of $805,561 for the purchase of concrete, masonry, and electrical equipment for the relocation of the Airfield Electrical Vault at the Middle Georgia Regional Airport to be paid from the Airport Fund, FBO Building and Building Improvements. That is also sponsored by Commissioner Joel Hewitt. And do I get a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Howell, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Wynn, do you have a question?
Just like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Yes, ma'am, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Got Howell, Bailey, everybody else, okay? If you do not want to be named as a co-sponsor, please. Mr. Bronson, you? He didn't catch it. All right, everybody except Mr. Bronson. All right, we've got a motion as second. Commissioner Wilder, you got some questions, sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the thing with ACE, we do have a representative from ACE here, in case Wheel Pharaoh's out there.
Wheel, oh, he came in a few minutes later. Appreciate you being here, and we got your correspondence. If you don't mind standing up just a second. He is head of the Public Safety at ACE, and they have submitted a request to Macon-Bip County for public safety items. We reviewed those items, and they do meet the qualifications, and our attorney will be taking care of that after our subsequent vote at 6:00. But you do not have to remain here for that if you don't want to. But I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Wilder. This is in regard to the airport. We do have a motion as second and several co-sponsors, so at this time, we take a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously and will be sent to consent agenda. Item four is regarding an item that we never talk about and nobody wants to do. It's called roads. This is a resolution of the Macon-Bip County Commission requesting Wake Sharpton of Butler Snow, LLP, to begin the process of attaining a $50 million in general obligation financing. Some of that to be used for roads, the purposes of sploß approving road conditions in Macon-Bip County, and reimbursing the county for certain expenditures previously purchased that we discussed several times. There are several co-sponsors to this, including Commissioner Hewitt. I believe Commissioner Wilder wants to be a co-sponsor of that as well. At this time, we entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Wilder, we have a second. Second by Mayor Potem Clark and others. Commissioner Wynn?
He's a co-sponsor.
We certainly will. So as we previously had a press conference a couple weeks ago to discuss our roads, we are scheduled to get our scan back in the next, this week. And we'll start the process of reviewing that scan and compare it to our program we did last time, the robotics program, to look at those roads. We're in the process now of overlapping some of that information to make sure that we complete the roads that were scheduled before. And our next item is kind of a little bit tied to that, but not part of the next sploß. It's the previous L-MIG. But we are moving rapidly on the, getting our portion done. This $50 million is a total amount that can be used for those projects and sploß. Remember, we approved up to $100 million. So we'll have this money to use on various projects, but the main part will be roads in the very beginning. Commissioner Bailey, would you want to be named a sponsor, or do you have a question?
Yes, I would like to be a sponsor on that as well.
We got you. Thank you very much. So we do have a motion as second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously and will be sent to consent agenda. Item B is the ordinance of the Macon-Bip County Commission authorizing the acceptance of L-MIG 2025 funds in amount of $2,385,048.79. This is appropriating funds for the required 30% local match in amount of $715,514.64. This is our normal L-MIG that we have, and this is our percentage that we pay out of the sploß funds, and we're trying to complete that as we begin our next process. So at this time, we entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Commissioner Wilder, second by Commissioner Bailey. Any further questions regarding this item? Here are no questions. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously and will be sent to consent agenda. We do have an executive session, and we do expect at least two items possibly to come out of that executive session for a vote. I'd like to remind members of the audience, if you're here to speak at our meeting at 5:30, approximately 5:30, we'll have a hearing on the budget. If anyone would like to speak, we ask you to fill out the form at the front. That's how we recognize folks and determine what type of presentation we need to do. So at this time, we entertain a motion going to executive session for consultation with county attorney or other legal counsel to discuss pending or potential litigation, settlement claims, administrative proceedings, and other judicial actions allowed by law. Get a motion going to executive session? Got a motion by Commissioner Howell, second by Commissioner Wilder. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. We're now in executive session.
Get a motion come out of the executive session. Got a motion, I got a second. So I got all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. All right, we are now at the executive session, I'm going to come to the podium, we'll go ahead and you'll get my presentation put up. We'll repeat what the presentation I did the last time before we take any comments from the audience, and then we'll come back to our last two items on the agenda. Can you hear me now? All right. So, first of all, I'd like to thank everyone again for your patience and coming back tonight to listen again to the presentation that we did. As I told you just a few weeks ago, Macon Biff County will not be doing a tax increase. We use preliminarily our last year's millage rate to do this evaluation that we have. We do expect to get the tax digests in the next several weeks. At such time, we'll bring that before to set the official millage rates for the citizens of Macon Biff County. So we know that tax assessments have gone out. Those are just estimates, and those estimates will be appealed by some, and then once that process is completed, the tax assessor and the commissioner will submit as what the tax digest is, and we'll set the millage rate which sets the tax rates. So we're going to begin this with the first slide. As we discussed last time, you look at the 2022 budget all the way to 2026 budget to show how we have grown the budget and how we have utilized our money, we'll talk about it in the next few slides. But most importantly, you look at 2021, we had a millage rate of 20.331, and the millage rate we had for this past year was 9.9, which you can see that's over a 50% reduction in the millage rate. As I mentioned last time, sometimes, you know, the states kind of overly complicate what a millage rate is and what you get money on. People think because you increase the values of their property on the tax assessors does, that it creates more revenue for Macon Biff County, but in fact, Macon Biff County gets zero additional dollars on that, except for new growth. Next slide. This will give you the example of just what I was talking about. In 2022, the property tax collections for Macon Biff County for assessed values in there that we actually got money on was $80,868. You can see in 2023, I'm sorry, 80 million, my bad, $82 million all the way down. But in 2025, 26, you'll see that our proposed budget for property tax dollars is $54 million. So basically, you can track the $80 million, subtract the $54 million, that'll show you the amount of money that we have decreased the properties. So despite any assessments going up, Macon Biff County is getting less funds from property tax values, thanks in large part of the successful rollback that we've done on the millage rate for several years and our avocation for the OLOS. Next slide. So where do we use our money for our county? So you saw when we started in 2022 and gone to 2026 on how much our budget has increased. So where have we spent our money? These are your salaries and benefits from 2021 up until 2026. As you can see, we had roughly $100 million in salaries and benefits back in 2021, and this commission each and every year has increased that amount of salaries and benefits to $123 million, $685,000. As I mentioned earlier, we are tightening the budget this year based on some things beyond our control, and we want to make sure that we hold line on various items. You can see the one-year increase of about $683,000 on salaries and benefits. But this shows you the entire guideline that we have to show where we're putting our money at. Next slide. Proposed public safety budget, you can see we divided that into fire, sheriff, EMA code enforcement to give you some totals there. What you'll take from this, this is only one portion of our public safety. On the next slide, in just a moment, we'll show you the other part of our public safety, because you have to add all this into our community. It's not just someone responding to a fire, it's not just someone getting arrested on a case, it's not just someone going to jail on the case. You have to prosecute and defend those cases as well, and we also have a court system to go through. What you can take from this slide is we had a total in 2021 of about $75 million in the public safety, and we've increased that to $94 million in 2026. That gives you an annual increase of $19 million, $147,000. That's an annual increase every single year, because we have kept that amount up once we got to where we're at today. You can see the one-year increase of just over 1.5 million, or roughly 1.5 million. This is a slide I talked about earlier, you look at the district attorney, the public defender, the courts, and the coroner, they're all part of our public safety. We can't do this without everybody working together. As you can see, on those budgets there, for the majority of that, we have, each department has received an increase from the beginning to the end, some more than others, because we have cases and backloads sometimes. But you can see that we've increased the public safety, Part B, public safety, from $18 million to $27 million, almost a $10 million jump, just on the courts and the DA, public defenders and the coroner, those budgets there. We're just showing you where we put the money at. So next slide. Next slide, we talked about the proposed budget public safety totals there. That gives you an example of how much we spent over the years when you add both of those, Part A and Part B together. 24, I'm sorry, $28 million increase per year is what we'll have putting that money in. So from 2021 to 2026, we have a $28 million increase in public safety budget overall each and every year after that. You can see a one-year increase from last year to this year of $2.4 million. Next slide. So some of the things that we are giving you examples of that we've increased over the last few years are some things that are important that this commission has told me when we were talking to formulate this budget on things that were important to them. As we all know, in this day and age with AI and all the things that we can become a target about, and we have as a fact, you know, been a target recently along with other governmental agencies, the information technology. So you can see in 2021, we had about a $5.2 million budget for information technology, and if you look at the budget for this year, it's $8.68 million. So that's been an increase of $3 million, $3.4 million, which will continue a $3.4 million increase, and we have a year-over-year of over $1 million as well. Next is proposed budget for recreation. Recreation is another one of those things, when we're looking at public safety, and we're looking at keeping kids out of the street, looking to doing something for our senior citizens and places that people have to go. Last plus, there's a lot of money spent on recreation, and those recreations, you have to have, you have to have maintenance and upkeep, but you also have to have someone there, working there to take care of the facilities themselves and the programs that you got. So you can see a pretty large increase there of over $3.3 million a year, from $4.6 million to $7.7 million, just from 2021 to the present date. Next slide. Beautifications, another issue that this commission talked to me about and their importance. You can see that we almost doubled what we're spending on beautification from 2021 into 2026. 2021, we had $2.4 million, and then in 2026, proposed budget is $4.6 million, which means we're putting our money where our mouth is regarding the beautification of our city. That's a 2.273 annual increase since 2021. Next slide. This is the timeline that we discussed then. We had a May the 20th presentation to this commission as well as the public. We provided copies online of the budget and provided copies here for folks that were here at it. Today is our public hearing. I think we have three or four people signed up for our public hearing, and I'm going to get back up there in just a moment. And then on June the 17th, the commission, because we are not raising taxes, only has to have this one hearing. We'll have the hearing for a final vote, which must pass six commissioners for that budget. And then after that time, assuming a successful completion of that budget, we'll get the tax digest in, and once that tax digest comes in, we'll bring back forth your recommendation on what to set the millage rate would be. And that time is where someone would have their tax bills. So I'm going to retire it back to the podium, and we're going to call the folks up that would like to speak. We'll allow them an opportunity to speak to that, we will not be answering questions back and forth. And then at the conclusion of that time, we'll take a vote on our last two items on the agenda before we retire and then come back for our regular meeting. Thank you. Mr. Bob Giles. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here tonight. I wish the next person would take your advice, but I'm afraid I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be good on that, she's already smiling. Mr. Lane Lucas, if you must speak, we'd certainly like to hear from you very briefly.
I'm not even going to respond to that, you know what I would say to you.
You can't, we got children in here all day.
That's right, that's right, good evening. It's an honor, always an honor and privilege to come before you. Having served a number of years with most of you, I know the hard work that you put into this, especially listening to what people have to say. Because when they can't catch the mayor, they're going to catch those of us who are elected. I just wanted to congratulate you on this budget and continuing to keep the mill rate low. I think that's a big plus for this community. However, I just want to make sure that you don't forget what I've said over and over, that there are some impending rate increases as far as the water authority is concerned. When I first went there, back in, my first meeting was December, that's what I heard, rating increases, rate increases. And I want you to keep in mind that this community has a 27% or higher, depending on which study you look at, but 27% poverty rate, 40% of our citizens have no means of transportation other than our bank and transit. There are just many, many other kinds of things that our families are dealing with. Georgia Power, I understand, just, they've been given the go-ahead for a number of increases, and I think our list of the charges that are on there are, you know, increase the length of the bill for us. To make my point, our people can only pay so much. And what I'd like to ask is you consider the budget, you make sure that you keep your eye on what is being spent. Now, there's a big lump of money that you're getting in advance, and there's that, you know, you want to spend it, and I know roads are important, but the water system is important as well. And I would just hope that you would keep that in mind as you deliberate and make decisions on specific projects.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. William Farrell. Mr. Farrell, thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I just, I have more comments than any specific statements. I'm representing the Academy for Classical Education, and I'm here tonight just to talk to you a little bit about school safety. I know we have an issue we're going to be addressing this evening with the commission, and I do appreciate the fact that, well, first let me just say that I was with Biff County Sheriff's Office for 33 years and retired. How you doing? Deputy Bryant. Good to see you. When I left Biff County, I went to ACE, and I began a police department there, I applied to the state, and we got certified to begin a law enforcement agency there, and we now become ASPD. When I got there, the first thing I did was try to get the, the things fixed, security-wise that I could, that were the least expensive, the cost-effective fixes that would make it a safer campus. And I don't think that school, school safety is anything that we have any kind of political separations about. You know, when we have events like Uvalde, most recently there in Appalachia. Looking into this issue, since I've been there at ACE, I've seen a lot of junk science solicited to me through the internet, through cold-call salespeople. What, what we've seen now is there is actually a technology started by a company called St. Tijix, which is a personal alarm, panic alarm system that teachers can wear around their necks or on their persons just generally. What that does is it allows a teacher, if they have an incident in a school where there's an active attacker, that teacher who's in vicinity of that active attacker can press that panic alarm, and through a mapping system with that software, can direct law enforcement within 20 feet of where that attacker may be in that school. That's a big stark difference that we had between the Uvalde, Texas incident, where it was pretty much a law enforcement disaster. It was a law enforcement response disaster. Appalachia is a different side of the coin. At Appalachia, they had this particular system in place, and that attacker was located within a minute and a half and stopped. And the only reason there was a casualty there at that particular event was because a teacher heard the noise in the hall and breached protocol and opened his door. And that, that, that's where some of our casualties were at that particular event. So fast forward to the speed zone cameras. This is an issue that I, I know a lot of the public has heard about in the news and has personal opinions about, and we weren't sure about it at first. But I think that as the commissioners and as the mayor, I think you, you, everybody has been diligent about working the bugs out in the system of speed cameras here in Biff County. I know where there's some, there were some issues, but I real, I do feel as a, as a constituent, as a voter, as a citizen, that the problem has been worked out with the speed cameras. And who can argue with slowing down traffic in speed zones? So that the law, House Bill 268 and the speed zone camera law, they, they kind of can work hand in hand, and I see an opportunity here for that. The speed zone law, the revenue is specifically earmarked for law enforcement initiatives. And we are a law enforcement agency at ACE, we're ACE PD. And House Bill 268, Alyssa's law that was just passed by the, the State House and Senate, mandates schools to provide their teachers with these panic alarms, either on their computer devices at their desk, on their person, or somewhere within close proximity of those teachers in their actual classrooms. They're not inexpensive, but they're effective, and you get a big bang for the buck. And I, what I wanted to say in closing is I really do appreciate the fact that this law, House Bill 268, was passed with that earmarked money specifically for law enforcement initiatives. And this is a school safety law enforcement initiative, and I appreciate the fact that the commission has brought it before, a vote here tonight to take the school camera funds and make ACE campus a campus in which every commissioner sitting here tonight has constituents and students attending. Every single one of you has students from, from your section of, of the county attending ACE. And I appreciate the fact that you're going to help us or try to help us make it a safer campus. And this is a really effective device, along with the perimeter security fence, that we need to complete, because that, that is a problem on our open campus, and we'd like to shore that up as well. But I just want to thank the commission for bringing this before, before a vote tonight, because it, it really is an effective government, watching government in action. Sometimes you get skeptical and you wonder where does the money go, what's it getting spent on? But I see that this actual speed zone money is being used for what it, what it's supposed to be used for. And, and I just would like to say I appreciate that, and I hope to get your support for that tonight, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Mr. Ronaldo Scott? Mr. Scott, good to see you again tonight. How you doing?
Good evening. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I do want to bring focus to, right now, our city is at a crisis. We're currently facing families being evicted at a huge rate. Our neighbor, well, the shelters are overwhelmed, our neighbors are without basic necessities at homes. Biff County recently was awarded funding to combat homelessness. So I'm asking that you go into your budget and that you pull out that fund so that we can build homes. can build homes around Macon. Macon-Bibb County was one of three cities that received those affordable home funds, and we are looking to make sure that they be used correctly. I would say we are asking, but no, we're not asking anymore. We're demanding that the mayor and the commissioners make affordable housing, evictions, prevention, and hunger relief available to our residents. Savannah started their program and placing people houses on their county-owned land. We're asking what has Bibb County done? We have organizations here that support homelessness and helping people out there, but we don't have, they don't get to support the funding or anything that they need. So at this moment, I'm just asking that you all go through the budget and make sure the funds are allocated correctly to what it's supposed to be allocated to, because we have a large amount of evictions that came in Bibb County. I'm not sure if you're aware, I'm not sure of the numbers, but I know it was over 18,000 since 2020, when I last checked. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Good to see you tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our hearing. We're going to go back into our regular scheduled pre-commission meeting. We have two votes to take on that tonight. We will be starting our 6 o'clock meeting at 6:15 tonight, so if you, those of you who need to step out to use the restroom or want to take a break, that's fine, but once we take care of these last two items, we'll take a brief recess for about 15, 20 minutes, we'll be back at 6:15. So we'll move back on to the regular scheduled pre-commission meeting. You'll notice there are two items on the agenda. The first of them is going to be a settlement of a property tax dispute. That's a resolution of Macon-Bibb County Commission approving the waiver of portion of penalties and interest owed by Academy for Classical Education, Advilorum, property taxes for a partial number, and it lists the partial included there, and at this time, we entertain a motion to approve. A motion by Commissioner Howard, we have a second. Second by Commissioner Bailey. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries, will be sent to consent agenda. The second item that we will discuss coming out of the executive session is a resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with MFA Program Management LLC for the provision of project management services in an amount not to exceed 3.25% of the total project cost to be paid from the supplies funds and for other lawful purposes. This is in regards to RFQ 25-044, that was posted regarding a new Macon arena. So at this time, we are entertaining a motion to approve. Motion by Mayor Proctor and Clark, we have a second. Second by, who was that? Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That motion carries, will be sent to consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our pre-commission meeting. We'll be back at 6:15 for our regular meeting. Thank you.